Good catch, appreciate that. See, that's why I love. We have 26% shot, pretty much catching everything. Mr. Brightling, we ready, sir?
Yes, I am.
Be good, yeah? Heather, we good to go?
We're good to go.
With that, I will call the November 2nd, 2020 Cass County Commission meeting to orders. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shirley?
I'm here.
Brightling?
Here.
Peterson?
I'm here.
Dean?
Here.
Pollak?
Here.
We have a forum. Ms. Warden, if you'd lead us in the pledge, those of you at home, stare at the flag and go on it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, presumably we've got a chance to review prior meeting minutes. If someone looked for a motion to approve, amend, please.
Move.
Thank you.
Moved in second, prior meeting minutes be approved as presented. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please sign up and say an aye.
Aye.
Those both same side? Motion passes. Order of the agenda. I don't believe we have any amendments. Mr. Brightling?
I don't have an amendment, but I do want to reference on the consent agenda H. Both myself and I believe Chairman Peterson received a four-page email from Mr. Benson
Correct.
describing the need for the change. And I immediately responded positively, and I believe that Chairman Peterson did this.
I didn't respond, but got her. I didn't disagree. Okay. Order of the agenda, commissioners with no amendments, look for a motion to approve as presented.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second, order agenda be approved as presented. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, so you'd say by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those both same side? Motion passes. Consent agenda. Commissioners, presumably we had a chance to review. Commissioner Brightling just commented on an item, had a presumption that we've had a chance to review, and looking for a motion to approve or amend. Commissioner Steen, please.
Yes, I'd like to perhaps remove item G from the consent agenda for some clarification, perhaps at the next meeting. The individual applying indicated the county residence was regent on county.
Okay, so item G, you want to move it down or table it?
Delete it.
Delete it.
Delete this consent agenda.
Okay, and the logic being, could you please explain against your ID, and I know, but...
I will just claim this. So what we think is, and Ms. Warden was trying to clarify, and we've had not enough time to do this, their physical address appears to be outside of Cass County. So obviously, they can't represent us very well not being from here. So the intent of Commissioner Steen's thought is to remove that, allow that person to clarify, maybe there was a miscommunication on their application, or I don't know what. So without objection, we should get a motion in second to strike that. Move to remove.
Is there a second, please? Move in second, and G be stricken? Any discussion? If not, I'll better do a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Shirley?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Item G has been removed from consent. Any further discussion regarding our consent agenda? Commissioner Steen, please.
Remove the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second, the consent agenda be approved as presented with the amendment of the removal of item G. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, I don't see Commissioner Shirley here, just in case, I'm sure she's fine. There she is, okay. With that, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Shirley?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Now is the time for public comment. A lot of people, three or three minutes to address the commission, they're not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak to commission, now is your time. I don't see anybody jumping physically or virtually, so we will move on. Item one on our regular agenda, as we have been repeating for the last handful of meetings, we have our Cass County joint water resource request. And as a reminder to those of us that have been here, we've gone through this a number of times, but I do think it's prudent, for those of us who haven't been here, and Mr. Frederick, there you are, I think it'd be prudent again, Mr. Dodds, to reiterate what we've done in the past, your basic outline, Mr. Frederick's basic outline, then we can proceed on to other items on our regular agenda. And again, I apologize for being tedious for those of us that have been here, but just in case, there are a lot of people that have not been here, especially the people that are on the agenda, probably have no idea regarding the methodology, so with that, I'll hush my mouth. Mr. Dodds?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. In front of you today, we do have six separate actions that we will be asking for your approval on. These are property owners primarily impacted by the Burton Channel, however, one of them, one of the actions is related to properties impacted by Southern Embankment Reach One. We'll get into those details as we go forward.
Excuse me, can you hear me? I've lost my audio to you.
I can hear you, Mary, but I can't hear the audio from the commission room.
I've lost the audio as well.
I will contact IT.
Can you hear us?
Here we are.
Commissioner Shirley, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Outstanding. Okay, so you missed out that Mr. Dodds had his groove going on, and we wrecked his groove, but now he's gonna try to regroove and let us become more informed as to the process. So again, Mr. Dodds, groove along.
All right, thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Just as a brief introduction again, the Cass County Joint Board is here tonight asking your permission on six separate actions. We'll get into the specifics of those actions as the meeting goes forward. Just a quick note, five of those actions are related to parcels impacted by the channel footprint, and one of those actions is related to parcels impacted by the Southern Embankment Reach Number One. ...for the project. Once we have appraised values, we are required, the Joint Board is required to follow the statutes laid out in the North Dakota Century Code, which were updated in 2017. And one of those steps in that process is for the Cass County Joint Board to bring forth acquisitions, bring forth a request to the county commission for the use of what's called Quick Take eminent domain, in the event that we are not able to reach an agreement with the property owners prior to that step in the process. And so here we are tonight, again, we have six actions in front of the county commission asking for your permission to utilize Quick Take eminent domain. As I noted earlier, these parcels are impacted by the footprint of the channel, as well as the footprint of Southern Embankment. The project, the P3 procurement process is ongoing, and we need to have the lands acquired for the channels to help solidify the P3 bidders as they're working to put their final bid packages together. And then for Southern Embankment Reach Number One, the Corps has designed that, and they are working on getting their final plans and specs ready as we speak, with intentions of starting construction on Southern Embankment Reach One early next year. As I mentioned earlier, the Joint Board is following the statutory process lined out in the Century Code. As usual, I would turn this over to Sean Fredericks with On-Sent Twitchell to give a brief history and a brief summary about what the statutes require, in particular, what the role of the Joint Board is, and also what the role of the county commission is. So with that...
Mr. Fredericks, if you can wait one second. Commissioner Shirley, you have a question?
Yes, apparently somebody is muting, and so Mr. Dodd's comments are cutting in and out. And so I don't know, I'm texting Terry, and he said somebody is muting the whole group. The group can all hear each other, I believe. I can hear Mr. Fredericks, and I heard Ken before, but anyway, just there's, I don't want to miss anything.
Oh, can you hear me okay right now?
I certainly can, but it's...
You couldn't hear him.
Apparently, it's intermittent. And I don't know why anybody would have the ability to hit mute for everyone, but anyway, just...
It's only when Mr. Dodd's is speaking.
Maybe that's something with Mr. Dodd's. Let's try Mr. Fredericks and see how that goes. Give it a try.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I won't promise that I'll get into a group here like Eric was, but...
No one can expect that.
All right. As Mr. Dodd's noted, and as we've discussed at previous meetings, in 2017, North Dakota Legislature amended the Quick Take authority for water resource districts. We call it eminent domain of last resort, if you will, but at any rate, in 2017, the legislature amended it and really created a fairly lengthy process in terms of water resource district Quick Take authority. The concern was that there were water entities at various segments of the state that were rushing to Quick Take, if you will. In other words, in certain cases, on some projects, various water entities, in their very first contact with landowners, they were threatening Quick Take eminent domain. And so in the 2017 legislative session, the legislature enacted a new process for water resource districts that required a fairly lengthy negotiation process, a number of certified mailings, invitations to attend at meetings. All in all, the objective of the legislature was to ensure that landowners have a meaningful opportunity to negotiate with water resource districts. And water resource districts must verify that they've completed that process. There's an informal negotiation process and a lengthy formal negotiation process, and a water resource district must verify that they followed those steps to the county commission before they can actually utilize and attempt to take right-of-way for purposes of a project through Quick Take eminent domain. I think you'll find, like most of our meetings, you'll find that the packet submitted by the land agents, in this case, will demonstrate that the water resource district has, in fact, afforded all of these parties very meaningful and numerous opportunities to interact with water resource district and to engage in meaningful negotiations. And that, like I say, is really the objective. Sorry, Mr. Chair, is there a question? Okay. At any rate, for purpose of the commission, the reason to insert the commission in this process was to ensure that the governing entity that appoints water resource districts understands why we're going to utilize or why we're seeking to utilize Quick Take eminent domain, and to ensure that your commission is comfortable that we follow the requisite steps. For the benefit of the landowners who may be in attendance, either in person or virtually, understand that the legislature did not intend to insert the commission as the negotiating authority. The Cass County Commission does not have any obligation to negotiate with landowners, no obligation to approve our appraisal, no obligation to even agree with the amount that the water resource district has offered as just compensation for the right-of-way required for the project. And as a side note, I should also note that, under the Quick Take eminent domain authorities for water resource districts, water resource districts can take a right-of-way, which is basically an easement and is not fee simple title, so just as a side note. But at any rate, for the benefit of the landowners, the county commission is not required and has no obligation to approve the amount that we've offered as the Cass County Joint Water Resource District, nor is the county commission have any obligation to act as an arbiter of any other legal disputes or legal arguments that anybody might offer in terms of our authority to use eminent domain regarding the project, regarding the efficacy of the project. And so I just want to make sure that landowners understand that the county commission, even if you approve the Cass County Joint Water Resource District's request to utilize Quick Take eminent domain, the county commission is not necessarily agreeing with the appraisals, not necessarily agreeing with the amounts that we've offered, not necessarily agreeing to any other legal issues, but instead, the only objective, the only objective of the legislature to insert the county commission is simply to force the water resource district to verify to the commission, the entity that appoints the water resource district, that we have, in fact, followed these steps. So that is the objective, that was the objective of the legislature, I think, as I note, I think you'll find in the landowner packets, that the land agents and the water resource district have offered landowners very significant opportunities to negotiate with the water resource district and to engage in meaningful negotiations. Mr. Chair, I stand for any questions any members of the commission might have.
Mr. Fredericks, thank you. Commissioner Shirley?
I'm sorry, no, I do not.
Well, this serves as a great sound check, then, so you can obviously hear us better. Yes?
I guess, I would just say, though, before, when Eric gets into his first one, I do have a comment.
Okay, Mr. Dodds, anything, any questions from Mr. Fredericks or Mr. Dodds, commissioners? I don't see anything. Question from Commissioner Shirley to Mr. Dodds, go ahead, Commissioner.
I, no, I don't have a question, but are you going to start out with OIN 227, 228?
That is correct.
Okay, then, for this particular one, I just feel like I may have a conflict of interest, or at least a perceived conflict of interest, due to the fact that Mr. Johnson and I are both on the ballot for the upcoming election. Mr. Fredericks is present, if you need further clarification, but at this point, I would like to recuse myself.
Okay, I will respect your views. Any objections from the commissioners, I can't imagine, but if there are, now is the time, commissioners? Okay, with that, Mr. Dodds, let's go to item 1A. Proceed, sir.
Okay, before I proceed, I just want to get a sound check. Mary, Ken, can you hear me okay? Okay, great.
Yes.
Item 1A in your packet is related to OIN 227 and 228. This is property owned by Marty Johnson. I want to start off by saying that just recently...
We're unable to hear him.
Not speaking, go ahead, Mr. Dodds.
Okay, as I was indicating, the board did, just a week or so ago, did approve a purchase agreement or a counteroffer for these two parcels, to acquire both parcels, 227 and 228 in their entirety. That purchase agreement is currently being reviewed by the legal counsel for the property owner. We have no expectation that there'll be any problems with that. I would fully expect the purchase agreement to be fully signed. With that being said, as in the past, when we have had these situations arise, we felt like it was still prudent to keep this item on the agenda and still proceed and ask for your permission to request to utilize the last resort eminent domain in the event that, you know, something goes awry and we want to maintain our schedule. Just one comment about schedule as well, obviously, you're all aware, but just to explain, the Doris Authority was able to reach a settlement agreement with opposing parties to the project that news broke late last week. And since that news broke, I think it's fair to say that our schedule is more certain than ever. You know, with the lawsuits that have been associated with the project, there's always been some question as to the, sort of how firm the schedule was. And now with those lawsuits behind us and the settlement agreement, I think it's clear to say that the schedule for the project is as certain as it will ever be, and it's maybe further evidence why we wanted to keep this item on the agenda and ask for your permission. Just a few comments in here, you'll note that on page five of your package shows a map of the parcels, that there's also a map on page six. In an acquisition summary, started on page four, you'll notice that the board did approve the landowner counteroffer on the October 22nd meeting. And so again, I expect that that will be fully approved, but I wanted to bring this forward since it was on your agenda and the schedule is right. So happy to answer any questions if you have any. Pause there for comments and questions.
Mr. Dodds, my apologies, who'd asked prior, I'm presuming that no owners' representatives are on the line for any of these, or do we have? So I thought we had one person calling in to listen, but I just, I forgot to ask that.
It's my understanding that representatives from the Crowe family have asked to call in and listen. The Crowe family does have three of the actions in front of us tonight.
Yep. Okay, so we have, but they don't want to speak? We should ask them to speak if they want to. I will, okay. So with that, no one else that you're aware of, though?
No.
Okay, commissioners, questions for Mr. Dodds regarding item 1A?
I think they want us to move forward as a safeguard measure.
Okay.
Even though there's obviously a settlement in process.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Brightling. Discussion, a motion, questions?
I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize Quick Take eminent domain under section 61-16.1-09, grants two prospands of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for a right-of-way regarding OIN 227, less auditor's lot one and OIN 228.
Is there a second, please? Is there a second?
This is Pollak, I'll second.
Mr. Pollak, thank you, move in second. Commissioner Shirley, you have a question?
Mrs. Shirley, your hand is up.
I'm sorry, I will put my hand down. It was before.
Great, outstanding. Any discussion, commissioners? Commissioners, Steen?
I have a question on this one. Just clarification. So we needed one parcel. Owner wanted to sell all parcels. And basically with that, we pretty much offered, or looking at accepting a counteroffer for what that individual asked on a per acre price on the land we needed, that took what we thought was appropriate on the land we didn't need. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Any questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Shirley?
I recuse myself.
Abstain. Motion passes, thank you. Item 2B, Mr. Dodds?
Chairman Commissioners, item 2B in your packet is OIN 525. This property is owned by James and Doris Crowes. If it's okay, I might talk about item 2B, 2D as in dog, and 2E as in Edward, at the same time, they're all owned by the Crowe family. I think they probably need to be three separate actions, but if it's okay with you, I might just sort of consolidate that discussion, since the negotiations and communications with property owners have been... the negotiations and communications with property owners have been largely held in a consolidated fashion as well.
If I can ask you to pause, Mr. Dodd's, any objection commissioners? I think it makes prudent sense. No objection, continue sir.
And also, as noted earlier, I believe there are representatives from the Crowe family that are listening in, your choice if you'd like to ask them to speak, or if they would like to speak, of course.
Yeah, what I'd like to do, Mr. Dodd's, is allow you to present, and then I'll allow the owners' representatives an opportunity to speak, like we have in the past, and if they so choose, great, if not, also great. And then we'll just continue down the line. Mr. Dodd's, please.
So for IOIN 525, there's a packet in front of you, on page six of 42 of that packet, you see a map highlighting all four parcels that are represented by the Crowe family. You can see that there is different ownership on each parcel, and so that's why there ends up being three separate actions, but nonetheless, you can see where all four of those parcels are located. The Crowe family has been fairly consistent all throughout our year and year and a half long discussions, or maybe even longer than that, with them. They have asked to do a land trade, and have presented requests to do the land trade to the joint board on more than one occasion. Some of their offers have been presented to the joint board, a few of those offers have been viewed and declined, and currently, the Crowe family, as I understand it, is working on an updated counter offer associated with a land trade. Mr. Helvey has been their land agent, he's on the phone with us and can help provide any more details if need be. You'll notice on the negotiating summary, page four, and on page five, one of the proposed land swaps or land trades that they had asked for, was effectively 1.75 acres to one. Generally speaking, we have tried to stay away from land trades. In this situation, the Crowe family does own land that is rate adjacent to a bunch of asset lands that we own, that we've bought extra land from willing sellers. And so in this situation, we've been contemplating whether the joint board would allow a trade, but as you see earlier, the proposal to sell, to basically offer more acres than what we were obtaining, was declined by the board. In those discussions, I think it's probably important to point out, the Crowe family has indicated that the land that we're acquiring from them, they've been arguing is higher quality land than the land that we were offering to trade to them. And so that was, I think, part of their request for obtaining more acres, was because of a land quality standpoint, which I think is a fair point, but it's also one of those reasons why we've generally steered clear of land trades, because there's just all sorts of nuances associated with the quality of land. In your packet as well, on page 39, you can see the contact log, this is attached to the land agent's affidavit, and so the contact log started back in August of 2019, when appraisals were presented, and there's been substantial communication, even beyond the list of contacts that are shown here. I know that the Crowe family has met with several board members, they've met with some design team members, I've been involved in a couple of those meetings with reps from the Crowe family as well. It's a lot of communication, I commend them on, you know, asking good questions and being part of the process and being an active participant, that's certainly better than not being active participation. So with that, I guess I would pause and see if there's any questions that you may have or comments from the property owners.
Commissioners, questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion? Possible motion?
Are we going to hear from the Crowe family first?
Oh, that's my apologies, yeah, we should have an opportunity. It's our understanding to those of you listening or watching virtually, that there's a representative from the family listening or watching, or watching and listening, and we'll allow you an opportunity to present any questions, concerns you may have. Again, you don't have to feel compelled to, I don't see anybody muting, and don't feel compelled to, but we sort of allow the opportunity if you want to. Mr. Dodd's.
Commissioners, if I may, I'd probably mention this, but maybe just to be more clear, the Crowe family, as we understand it, is working on a counter offer that we anticipate being ready for an upcoming joint board meeting. The land agent thinks that that counter offer may be acceptable to the joint board, I guess we're still working on the eaches of all that, so.
And again, I don't see anybody jumping through the virtual mic, and certainly not the physical mic. So with that, commissioners, any questions, concerns? Commissioner Brightling, yes sir.
I should disclose the fact that I've known James Crowe for 20 years, and at one time, I represented the company that he managed, the Sunflower Facility in Grandin. If that appears to be a conflict with the rest of you, I would recuse myself, but I don't believe it is.
I would, I mean, we all know everybody, and chances are, I work for somebody that knows Mr. Crowe, or heck, he's probably invested in one of my projects as far as I know, so it's just the way it is around here, kind of, even in the big counties. Commissioners, any questions, discussion, a motion? And again, it'll be three separate motions, and I don't know if we want to go, I mean, Commissioner Steen, go ahead sir.
So, Eric, did you plan covering, I mean, you covered pretty much the entire three different motions we have covered here, correct?
Yeah, Commissioner Steen, thanks for the question. The negotiations have really been done, you know.
We're still going to want a motion on each parcel, just in case.
Mr. Chair.
Different ownership.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Steen.
Move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under section 61-16.1-09, sub 2 of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for a right of way regarding IOIN 525.
Is there a second please?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Screen up, sorry. I'm missing you, no, I don't see anything, okay, any discussion? If not, roll a pop vote please.
Commissioner Shurling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes, and just to be continuous, I think we should probably go to item C and then move down? Or do you want to?
I just take, let's take the three we've covered.
Okay, any objection commissioners to jumping to item D and E? Done here, virtually, I don't see either one of them objecting, okay, Commissioner Steen, please.
I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under section 61-16.1-09, sub 2, North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for a right of way regarding IOINs 882 and 8938.
Is there a second please?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, virtually, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Steen?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you commissioners. What's that commissioners team?
I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under section 61-16.1-09, sub 2 of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for a right of way regarding IOIN 886.
Is there a second please?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll a pop vote please.
Commissioner Pollock?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Item 1C, Mr. Dodd's, please.
Commissioners, item 1C on your agenda is related to five separate IOINs owned by Horton-Perez, IOIN 747, 751, 5014, 5015, and 5027. These five parcels are impacted by the Southern Embankment Reach Number One. On page six of 57 in your packet for this property, the map showing those five parcels, as well as the impacts from the project. On page four of your packet is the brief negotiating summary that outlines where we've been with the property owner. You can see that there was an appraised value conducted in November of 19, after we received the design from the Corps. Those appraised values were presented, offers were made to the property owner, formal offers have been made, we have increased our offers to the sort of standard 10%, and then we actually went back and increased our offer to $7,000 per acre. You can see the appraised value is more reflective of raw farmland at about $5,400 per acre. And so that $7,000 offer has been presented to the property owner. As of most recently, the property owner has come back and contemplated making a counter offer at $7,500 per acre. We have not yet formally received that counter offer. Mr. Jamie Work is here, has been dealing with all these property owners along Southern Embankment Reach One for quite some time. In the event we are able to receive that counter offer, we will certainly bring that forward to the joint board for consideration. The contact log with Mr. Perez is on page 49 of 57 in your packet, and you can see the long list of outreach calls and correspondence between our land agents and the property owners, and again, with reference to the appraised value, the $7,000 value, and in the most recent discussions about $7,500. With that, I guess I would pause and ask if you have any comments.
Commissioners, any questions regarding 1C? Discussion, a motion?
Move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under section 61-16.1-09, sub 2, of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for right of way and temporary easement regarding IOINs 747, 751, 5014, 5015, and 5277.
Commissioner Brightling, thank you. Is there a second please?
Steen seconded.
Steen seconded, thank you sir. Any discussion on the motion commissioners? If not, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Motion passed, item 1F, Mr. Dodd's.
Chairman Commissioners, item 1F in your packet is related to IOINs 7769 and 1200. These properties are owned by Bruce Stu Living Trust et al. We have a usual packet, 36-page packet, summarizing these negotiations. Page five of that packet shows a map highlighting the two parcels owned by the Bruce Stu Living Trust et al. As you can see, both parcels are partially impacted by the diversion channel, one of them is just bordering the Cheyenne River, and one of them is bordering the Cheyenne diversion channel. We have had ongoing negotiations, and this is another incident where we've had lots of communication and lots of interaction. At one point in the negotiations, there was an approved counter offer for parcel 1169, but as the negotiations continued, we were not able to agree with the counter offer on IOIN 1200, and after that decline of counter offer, the property owner sort of retracted their consideration on the counter for 1169. And so today, we sit here in front of you without agreement on either of those parcels. The property owner has been advocating for, you know, development land or potential development land prices. You can see on the negotiating summary on page four, the appraised values were $9,000 an acre for 1169, and $5,500 an acre for 1200. Property owner is asking for somewhere close to $15,000 per acre. That has been presented to the joint board on a couple different occasions, the joint board has declined those counter offers, and the contact log and summary of all those contact attempts is on page 33 of your packet. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. As I noted earlier, Mr. Jamie Work is here and able to help fill in some details if need be.
As I do notice in your notes, this may have been on other projects too, I don't recall seeing it though, regarding the $30,000 an acre recent sale, where is that, where did that take place, adjacent to the channel? And this isn't germane to the issue, but I'm just curious.
I don't know for sure, but my suspicion is that it's land within Horace, perhaps by the new high school.
I'm saying, it's adjacent to the channel, there can't be anywhere $30,000 bucks near this.
We do know of one small parcel that was acquired as a single-family home, or it was like a 10-acre parcel, that a property owner purchased to put their home on, and they paid close to $40,000 an acre. It's not exactly on the channel, but it's adjacent to the river, and so we've heard news of that happening, that people are trying to find those little pockets of development land, you know, that might be on a river and close to town type thing.
I want to see if my assessor's on this call, because that is a substantive increase, and I mean, that's massive in terms of value, so I don't see my assessor, but I'm going to be texting him later, to let him know that we've got land, and this isn't a bad thing, I'm not, this isn't meant as, it's just, it's an incredible thing, seeing land running for $40,000 an acre now by Horace, it's an incredible thing for Horace, it's wonderful. So, sorry about that. Commissioners, your thoughts? Motion, discussion? Commissioner Steen, thank you, yes sir.
Move to authorize Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under section 61-16.1-09, sub 2 of the North Dakota Century Code, to take an easement for right of way regarding IOINs 1169 and 1200.
A second please.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Discussion commissioners? If not, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Shurling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Motion passes, that completes item one on our agenda. Mr. Dodd's or your team, anything further?
The only thing I guess I would leave you with is appreciate your continued support, and with these actions, that does not mean that we are going to stop negotiating, I know you've encouraged us to continue negotiating, and that we have full intentions of doing that, and I know the joint board does as well. We have been, with Sean's guidance and others, we have been contemplating how to maybe have some sort of more meaty discussions with the joint board, perhaps in an executive session type format, so we're working through some of those procedures as we move forward here in the coming months, and trying to continue negotiating with those properties.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd's, I think it's imperative that the commission make sure that the owners understand how grateful we are for their sacrifices as well, I've said this before because I mean it sincerely, is that this is not an ideal situation for anyone involved, so we know, even if it's an easy ask, where it's a chunk of land they just bought two weeks ago and have no emotional attachment to, but that, this is a big deal, so thank you guys, thank your team. I know you guys aren't the easiest of pathways either, so thanks for that, thanks to the owners, thanks to even the land reps and attorneys, the whole team, so. Commissioners, anything else, any further? Check my screen again here, if not, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Outstanding. Item two on our agenda, service contract for jail body scammer? Scammer, ha ha, scanner, not a scammer at all, it's a scanner because it scans. Mr. Freiberg, I understand you're going to present this, or is Mr. John or my grand sheriff?
Jesse, we can do it either way you want to do it.
Go ahead Andy, you can present it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I appreciate your time on this. We received this, this offer of a warranty and service agreement initially back in February, and at the time, the state was considering, the Department of Environmental Quality was considering a rule that would have effectively made the, made the body scanner not really useful to us anymore. That rule has since been tabled, and they approached us again with a servicing and repair agreement. This time this fall, when they, when they sent this to us, they brought us to our attention that there are federal existing regulations that require at least annual servicing, such as they're suggesting to provide here. The reason this was presented is because this is not something that we included in the budget for 2020 or for 2021, since the guidance we had been given by the state prior to COVID coming across was that they fully expected that rule to go into effect. I did provide a copy of the public comments that I submitted as part of that rulemaking process, and right now, that rule has been tabled with no final action, and that tabling is indefinite, there's nothing listed on the website about further action on it at this time. So what we suggested is that we move forward, since this is a federal requirement that we get this done, that we move forward with- we get this done, um, that we move forward with a one-year agreement, um, payable and quarterly installment. So the the first quarter installment would be due yet this year, and we do have remaining funds in our budget to cover that. Um, and even though it's not explicitly budgeted for, I'm sure we'll be able to make up somewhere else, um, to be able to to cover the the other three quarters next year. And then that would then give us the ability to see where that rulemaking process goes. And if it does pass, we can reassess. And if they decide to give us the waiver that we've requested, then we could look at , uh, budgeting for twenty twenty-one and beyond, or twenty twenty-two and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Freiberg. Commissioners, any questions? Discussion? I think it's fairly cut and dry. We have to have it, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollock?
Commissioner Pollock, yes, sir.
I move a budget adjustment be authorized and the sheriff's office be directed to proceed with their request.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Commissioner Steen?
Uh, maybe it was not clear. I I believe Andy suggested this covered within the budget, that they currently have, and there should be no budget adjustment required. Andy, could you clarify that?
Um, so the the, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Steen, uh, looking at at where we're at for the remaining budget of this year, um, the the quarterly payment this year would be for, I think it was thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that would still be, I think we're, that's still within what we have in remaining funds this year, um, from the the budget as a whole for the jail. Um, for next year, I think we would be able to work that in amongst all of the additional budgets or currently budgeted funds that we have. So I don't know that we we necessarily don't need one for this year, I don't think. It'd be tough to see what happens next year.
Mr. Chair, um, Commissioner Steen, what I would, what I would, uh, request is that we would take what we have, the three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, we could take out of this year's budget. Still, we don't need an adjustment in this year's budget. Excuse me. Um, for next year's budget, I would like to make the adjustment if we could. Um, I would, I would prefer to do it that way. And if we had money at the end of the year to give back, that would be okay. But I would, I don't want to run ourselves short.
Commissioner Pollock speaking. I think that, uh, that the motion stand would stand to that, uh, to that request.
Okay, commissioners, any other discussion? If not, I don't, Scherling, are you still here? There you are. Uh, any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollock?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Yes.
Scherling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It got us a note. Wonderful. Item three on our agenda, grant for lighting and highway department. Mr. Benson?
Good afternoon, commissioners. So every year prior to budgeting, we do a walkthrough with our buildings and ground staff and see what items may need to be updated and improved at our highway department facility. Um, this year, at the same time, we also were talking with Cass County Electric, our provider, electric provider at the highway department, and they discussed this opportunity for a grant through the, uh, North Dakota Department of Commerce. And, um, so as we were putting together our our budget, we also applied for this grant. Our budget was approved for twenty-five thousand dollars for updating all of our lighting at the highway department, both in our engineering and main office area, along with the vector side, plus, uh, um, our, uh, our, uh, maintenance bays and that part of portion of our facility. And then just recently, we did receive this, the grant, uh, approved by the Department of Commerce, uh, for twenty-two thousand and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, so it's a fifty-fifty match, so we can match up to that twenty-two thousand with our, with our funding. Uh, the, in the packet that of information, we did get a quote from a local electric company for, to get an estimate, to be able to use that estimate for our budgeting purposes. But, um, if this is approved, we would then move out, uh, to get quotes from multiple electric, uh, companies in order to bring that back for a contract then that we would look to get completed sometime early twenty twenty-one, as this would have to be done by and submitted by the end of June of twenty twenty-one for reimbursement.
Questions for Mr. Benson? Discussion, a motion? Commissioner Steen, please.
Move to authorize the commission chair to sign the Energy Conservation Program Grant Agreement and proceed with lighting upgrades at the Cass County Highway Department.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Scherling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Anything else?
Uh, the only thing, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Blaine Lobby at my office for And then outside of that, highway department wise, with the snow melting, we were getting an extra week of fall this week to get out and get some things cleaned up. So the next week or two will really get us situated for winter.
Have sixty-five degrees the next week. Pretty sweet. I think we were thirty degrees lower last week. Mr. Benson, thank you. Thanks for your team. All their efforts.
Item four on our agenda, public hearing on tax forfeited properties. Mr. Mont Plager, I see you.
Yes, I'm here.
Hello, sir.
This is the, uh, time when you'd have a public hearing on the, the values and and what has happened, of course, is we have sent out notices to the cities and townships where these are located, and we have had some conversations with them. Um, this is our list as the list stands. We have not heard from any of them on as far as the values. Uh, we are getting some good information on how to contact some of these people further. You know, we've probably got four or five of these where the original owner is deceased, um, or there has been a sale and an unrecorded deed, so we're still tracking people down. I have one that, uh, we may end up trying to do a contract for deed with that we're going to visit with later this week, uh, for an owner occupied home. But all in all, it's it's going good. I think quite a few of these we paid off, um, before the sale date, so.
That was my question, Mr. Mont Plager. The list we've been provided, you normally are able to strike a number of those at this meeting. Are they still, is this list still pretty current?
It is at this time, um, but we're working on it.
Okay, that'd be awesome. It'd be great to have this list down to none, but that's not reality.
I've got that one here.
Mr. Mont Plager, or does someone open the public hearing? Mr. Mont Plager, anything further, sir?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, I am going to open a public hearing, inviting all the candidates to address any issues, the appraisal of tax forfeited properties. Anyone, there's no one in the audience here, uh, anyone online? I'm going to go to my station here. I don't see anyone online. One more final call. Again, I don't see anybody, but I don't see anybody. Okay, with that, without objection, I am going to close, I'm going to give one more call, last call, no less words. Okay, uh, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, commissioners, we've had a public hearing with no input from the public at large. We have a list of forfeited properties, potentially forfeited properties, which we all hope gets paid off prior to the auction. Uh, what are your wishes, commissioners?
There's no action today, Jeff.
We don't, we don't, we don't going to, I thought we had to approve these.
No, that was last meeting, where we approved the appraisal.
Okay, and that's it then?
Yep.
Last meeting, you're just here comments this time.
Wonderful. That makes it even easier. Uh, commissioners, any thoughts on this item? If not, we'll move on. All right, we will move on. Item five, coronavirus update. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good afternoon. First of all, uh, I want to make sure that everybody received my updated memo that I distributed late this morning. Should be dated November second rather than the, uh, previous one was dated, no, October twenty-seventh, I believe it was. Um, really, what I, um, Commissioner Breitling, are you, are you shaking your head?
I didn't make copies. He emailed you.
I, uh, the, the change, uh, Commissioner Breitling, I'll just explain the change, is that after I prepared that memo last week, I got updated figures from the finance office of what the total estimated disbursement to Cass County is, uh, through the mechanism that has been, uh, been developed with, uh, with the state. So the, uh, the current estimated total, uh, that you're looking at on your, uh, memo there should read as, uh, eight million, five hundred thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Uh, and that is, uh, calculated through, um, the initial payment, uh, March through July has been received. Uh, the reimbursement for August through October has now been calculated by the finance office for submission to the state. I have not received that yet, but that is, uh, that is ready for submittal. And, uh, and then the reimbursements for the months of November and December are estimated based on monthly averages from, uh, uh, currently calculated, uh, amounts. And I should back up one, one moment just to say really the big news, uh, that I I bring to you, uh, today as part of this, uh, update, is that the State Emergency Commission in the budget section, uh, late last month, uh, extended the, um, uh, mechanism for providing cares funds to municipalities and, uh, and counties by, rather than basing it on law enforcement payroll expenses from March through September, they have now extended that through the end of the year. So that was a, that was a decision at the state level that has a, uh, material impact on, uh, the the cares funds that we receive at the county level. So, uh, if there are any questions, I I kind of backed into that explanation there.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Mont Plager, uh, is there any way, I think it's a done deal, but is there any way the state could regress and withdraw this? So again, the emergency commission's voted, I'm for sure, presuming the dollars have been allocated and there's no way to go back. But is there, in your mind's eye, any way for them to retract these dollars? I think Mr. Mont Plager's unmuted, too.
Yeah, I would defer to, uh, Mr. Mont Plager. I don't see a pathway to how that could happen, but I would defer, I would defer to Mike.
Mr. Mont Plager, do you know the answer to my question?
Well, I think the answer is no, there's no way that they would renege on these. Um, but I'd hate to say never. It's always possible. But I think for the most part, it's pretty much locked in.
I, I would agree with you, but like I said, I wanted to make sure that, that we all agree, because, because stuff happens sometimes and it isn't always positive. So, thank you. Uh, Mr. Wilson, any questions regarding this? Commissioners? If not, Mr. Wilson, continue, please.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, so that, that's a, a look at where we're at. Uh, moving forward, I would have a a couple updates for you. I briefed you during this update two weeks ago that we'd had some initial conversations with representatives of the city of Horus. Uh, Horus had reached out to us with a, a request for a suballocation, uh, for a, based on, uh, contract policing services that, uh, are provided to Horus by the Cass County Sheriff's Office. Um, a, a number of us had a follow-up conversation with, uh, Horus representatives after the last meeting, and there was a, uh, a follower, there was a, an agreement at that point that we were going to, uh, uh, receive some additional information from Horus that we have not received to this point. So to a, to a certain extent, that conversation is, is on hold as, as we wait to, uh, to hear, uh, additional feedback from Horus. Um, that, again, they, they made a request and, and we, um, you know, did not, uh, come to a, uh, resolution of that, uh, that request at that conversation, and I, I think we will, we'll have more discussion to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. As a gentle reminder, that discussion took place with myself, Mr. Wilson, their manager and their mayor. So, yeah, we are patiently waiting for any correspondence with them. Commissioner Steen?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Wilson, you and I had a discussion regarding, you know, appropriate way to come through some calculation if we decide to do this. And, um, if you could share that with the rest of the board, that would be excellent for the seventy-one percent or whatever number you come up with. After Mr. Wilson's done, Commissioner Pollock, you're next. Commissioner, Mr. Wilson, please.
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Commissioner Steen, uh, there, there have been a number of conversations in, in this vein in the recent weeks of, um, potential, uh, suballocations to municipalities that have policing contracts with, uh, uh, with counties. And, uh, and one, and that, we, we've had that conversation both here at the county level. We've also, uh, engaged with the executive director of the, uh, State Association of Counties, um, Terry Trainer on that. And, uh, the, as a, um, uh, indicated in the memo, um, the, the language, uh, in those conversations with the association is that counties have been urged, um, to use the same mechanism to pass through funds to contract cities. That is absolutely not required. There is, there is no requirement that is, uh, is built into that, but that is a, um, we, we've been urged to have those discussions, uh, by, by our association. Uh, the, the conversation that, uh, Commissioner Steen is speaking specifically of is, uh, you know, the, the original request that we got from Horus was for the entire amount of, uh, the monthly, um, uh, portion of the, the policing contract, uh, dollar figure. And in following up with the association, an alternative suggestion was that, uh, counties may wish to consider using that contracted amount times the percentage of the overall sheriff's budget that is devoted to payroll. In our, in our case, that is seventy-one percent. So that is, uh, again, that's just a conversation, uh, and a, uh, a, a suggestion that the association is made of, of something the counties may want to consider.
Anything further, Mr. Wilson?
Uh, I would have some other points, but I would stand by for questions.
Commissioner Pollock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I think that this money should be dedicated towards the expansion of the jail, and I think that we should be moving, moving forward with all, with all due haste in order to solve the serious deficiencies that exist with the way that we're doing business out there right now, and that this money should be dedicated for that, or the, the extra money that isn't already committed to the other projects.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything further, sir?
Not, not this moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Breitling and Commissioner Scherling?
In addition to Horus, there are three other cities in the county that we have contracts with. Has anyone contacted us concerning those three cities?
Let me, let me jump in, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, I have talked explicitly, I think that what we do, in my mind anyway, and I hinted at this prior, I think, during prior meeting, that's a prior meeting, if not, I was remiss in doing so. I think whatever we do for one, we should do for all. Uh, we also have SROs, so resource officers, but those, those school districts, Mr. Wilson, jump in if I'm wrong here, the schools receive direct money from the state already, whereas cities like this, subcontracted political with leasing contracts have not. So, and I don't know if that's what you're implying, but my perspective is to share with you is that whatever we do for one, we should do for the remaining group. And I think that's, to me, that's logical. But Commissioner Breitling, my apologies for interrupting, and then...
Has anyone made any calculation as to what we need for all four?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Breitling, for, to your first point of has anyone, has any municipality other than Horus County contacted us directly, the, the answer is no. Uh, to your point of have we made a calculation of, uh, what this amount would be, I, I don't recall it off the top of my head, but we have budgeted totals, uh, for each of these, uh, contracts, and they are broken down to, uh, in, uh, monthly amounts and, and the, there are, the, we, we could certainly multiply that total amount times point seven one, and that would be able to get that to you.
Thought that Mr. Mont Plager got us that number some time ago.
He, he may have. I could run, grab my budget book and I could get you a, a...
No, no, I thought, Mr. Mont Plager on the line. Mr. Mont Plager, did you, I thought, Mr. Wilson and I talked about this, and I thought you provided, Mr. Wilson, a number.
For total contracts?
Correct.
Um...
Where I saw an email, seventy-one percent. Where I saw an email, Mr. Wilson, you and I spoke about it. I swear we got a total number.
I didn't.
Mr. Breitling, Commissioner Breitling, we've had this talk prior to this meeting, Mr. Wilson and I, and Mr. Montplaisir, I don't know that, anyway.
Commissioner Chair, I, Chair Peterson, I don't have that number on the tip of my tongue. If we could, if I could just circle back to this, when I give my committee report, I can give you that total amount.
Okay.
I would have it by that point.
I bet Mr. Montplaisir might have it already, too.
I'm looking for it. We have it on a spreadsheet here somewhere, but...
Yep, that's what I had thought. So, with that, while you're researching, gentlemen, Commissioner Shurling, you've got a question, Mr. Commissioner Breitling, anything further, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Shurling, yes, you are up.
Thank you. So, just to clarify, the county already funds for all the supplies for these contracted services, is that correct?
The, uh...
Chair, Chair Johnner, let me out on that one.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Shurling, in general, there's a rough estimate. The county pays for the equipment that we use in those contracted cities, and the city pays for the salary and benefits for that person.
Thank you. So, then, all of the extra PPE, E-equipment that this pandemic has required, all of that kind of thing is being covered by the county, not, it's not being billed to these cities, is it?
No, it is not. So, we have our PPE here at the Sheriff's Office, and our patrol officers that work those contracted cities get their equipment from here, so they do not get it from the city.
And when you have to arrest someone and put them in the jail, all of the extra costs that are associated with that because of pandemic are covered by the county, is that correct?
Commissioner Shurling, that is correct.
Okay, so, that answers my question, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Shurling. Any further questions regarding this matter, commissioners? Commissioner Steen.
Yes, this is awkward, because it's an item on the agenda. We may or may want to take action, but we've got to wait. Good, you can take action on any item, but we're going to adjourn this and go into committee, and then I'm not sure we take action at a committee, or even suggest we take action at a committee or a presentation, but I'm confused what we want to do here.
This is simply informational. I would suggest that, as Mr. Wilson suggested in the past, we got correspondence from our friends in Horace. Our friends in Horace have not responded to us, therefore it's tabled, it's just informational. And I would contend that the further informational part is, I would suggest that if we ever do want to take action on this in the future, we should include those cities that have not talked to us as well.
I agree 100%, Mr. Chair, and I think with that, I think at the next meeting, we should have an agenda item addressing this, what the cost would be using whatever, 100% or 71%, and at least we can either take action or take no action, we should include all four entities that we contract with, be my suggestion.
And I think hand in hand with that, not that that's wrong necessarily, but I think hand in hand with that is we have to hear from the cities, too. Because I don't, I'm not sure, and again, I'm not going to get the full ask, and that's what Mr. Montplaisir may have for us here, just again, on trivia, I'm not sure that allocating a 100%, whether it's a percentage or whatever, there's not a massive, there's some impact, then we should do some help if we can, but I'm not quite sold on the full expenditure right now.
Not either. I am not either, but it'd be good information.
Yep, okay, thank you. Anything, I got you, Commissioner Pollak, hold on. Anything further, Commissioner Steen?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Pollak, then Commissioner Shurling.
So, one thing that I'm not hearing, we don't have any plan to move ahead with the urgent needs that we have at the jail. And I think that that should be part of our next meeting agenda as well. And the improvements that we need at the jail benefit everyone in the county, and certainly benefit these cities. I think that it's an appropriate use to dedicate these excess coronavirus funds towards completing this needed jail addition.
Thank you, Commissioner Pollak. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pollak, just, I would add that we had originally scheduled a sheriff's rotational discussion for this afternoon, fully aware of the urgency of the matter before us. We elected to defer that for one meeting because of some training schedules that key individuals needed to be involved in that conversation were in really all of last week, and so we felt like it was the best use of all of our time to be able to meet when we had a significant amount of information that we could bring back to you and give you some additional information beyond what you had last time. And that was the decision of why we didn't have the sheriff's rotational, where we would have addressed some of these jail issues that I think you were referring to in more depth. We will do that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Shurling, and then Chair Johnner.
You know, apparently, we're already covering all of the COVID costs throughout the county for law enforcement in these small communities and for outside the community. So, we've identified that the jail has some real concerns. I don't know why we would go down this other rabbit hole, and we, as a commission, already identified that the jail needs to have these funds allocated towards it. So, even though we don't know exactly what that might entail at this point, we certainly know that that's a need, and I haven't heard any other needs identified outside of that. So, you know, if, I don't know why we need to continue to table this every meeting, we can just move on to the task at hand. And that's doing nothing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sheriff, don't make me take a picture and show your hand up again, I'll text it to you. I'll do it, baby.
Actually, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I had started talking, I just hadn't unmuted. So, I don't have the monthly breakdown of our costs out there, but the total contracting price is 173,775 for 2021.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, any further regarding this topic? If not, we'll ask Mr. Wilson to proceed. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Only other topic that I have COVID generally related is, I think I briefed you previously that because of the workload on our finance and IT departments leading up to the election timeframe, asked departments that otherwise might be in a position to have more employees transition to working remotely at this time to hold off on those plans because of the IT effort that that takes to push people out of the facilities and working home. Obviously, you have a election tomorrow and expect that that work level will lighten up a bit after tomorrow. IT Director, Mr. Terry Schmaltz, has asked that I request an authorization for expenditure of $20,000 for 10 surfaces and related equipment, so that as soon as we are, he is done with election-related efforts, that we would have some additional surfaces available for transitioning additional employees to working remotely. The employee, the laptops, the surfaces that they previously, we previously purchased and acquired have been deployed, and it is Mr. Schmaltz feeling that he has additional deployments that could be effective if he had additional equipment to equip more employees to work remotely.
Anything further, sir?
That concludes my report.
Commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner Pollak, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'd like you to give us an update from the COVID Task Force, you know, as the infection rate and numbers, all numbers related to this continue to rise, I'm sure that you're meeting on a regular basis, but maybe there's information that you'd like to pass on to us.
Mr. Wilson, you start, then I'll finish.
Well, yeah, I was going to, I was going to say, Chair Peterson, you may have some information that you want to share with the conversations that you've had. I would just say generally, we are, as you mentioned, we're chatting with folks locally three times a week, and the statewide task force weekly. I think we've got a good handle on some of the challenges and issues that are faced on a statewide level. I think a lot of those challenges have to relate to multiple options and deploying the different options most effectively to get the best results statewide when it comes down to the data that you're talking about and infection rates and positivity rates. I think there's uniformity that there is concern about the direction we're headed in and looking for all options to improve those results. Sometimes the details get to be the sticky part of that, that I think, and at that point, I would turn it over to Chair Peterson, if you wanted to jump in.
Actually, Commissioner Shurling has a question for you, unless you want me to go, Commissioner.
Thank you. So, how do we get results back to the jail quicker? It's a huge impact for us, and we've talked about this before. I understand that they've got tests that will, that are capable of doing that, and yet it doesn't seem to be available to frontline workers at the jail, which is a real big problem for us.
Yep, so we swapped some emails, Commissioner, I'm just going to jump in, Mr. Wilson, yeah? Okay, so we swapped some emails earlier today for it off the state, communication with local jurisdiction, I think that's why Sheriff Johnner has his hand up, too. We have been approved, you know what, Jesse, you were the correspondent, started the state, they responded back. Sheriff Johnner, you are probably best to comment on this, so I'm going to let you do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, and also Commissioner Shurling, I appreciate yourself and Commissioner Pollak taking an interest in the jail, because it's been tough to work in there lately. I did reach out today both to Robert and Chad to see how we could get results back quicker, because frankly, today, we had eight employees at the jail that were working there that were strictly on overtime, because our regular employees are out and are waiting to get tests back. So, it has become an issue for us at the jail. I coordinated email response with both Robert and Chad. Chad reached out to someone at the state, and I got a call back from Doug Murphy pretty quickly after he reached out to the state. And I think that we have, we're going to try a few different things going forward to hopefully get some results back quicker. What those are is, it sounds like we can hook directly now into Cass Public Health, and rather than our employees getting that or waiting to get that information back, as soon as the results come in, apparently, those are put into a database at Fargo Cass Public Health, and it appears now that we will be able to access that database. And that might speed things up at least a couple of days for us, so we're kind of hoping that will help us well. We're also doing some experimenting with this saliva testing that's over on the Clay County side, because according to Clay County Public Health, they can get results back within 28 hours. And if that's the case, that would be quicker than what we've been seeing some of the turnaround time on. So, we've got a few things that we're going to try after today. I was just on that meeting about an hour and a half ago, and so I guess at this point, it's a matter of testing the waters and seeing if it helps us, but yes, we definitely need to try to get that stuff back a little quicker.
Commissioner Shurling.
So, why aren't the saliva tests available to us? I understand they were available to somebody in the state. I mean, we've been talking about this for weeks now, and, you know, I think, I just don't hear any answers, and so I'm wondering, are we talking to the right people? What is the plan? What's the priority that the state has or Cass Public Health has?
So, a couple of things there. First of all, I think we're talking about two separate tests. I think you're maybe thinking about that 15-minute test. The 15-minute test, Commissioner Shurling, the efficacy or the accuracy of that is subject to a great deal of debate. Now, we went from a 95%, I think this is public, right? Mr. Wilson? I think it is. So, I sit on the Cass County COVID Task Force, but I also on a weekly phone call directly with Governor Burgum's office. They have the top 14 counties in the state, and they have both county and city commissioners, or mayors, excuse me, on a weekly call now, so we sit on that, that last call is two and a half hours, which is fine. So, we got a good swath of what's going around statewide. It encompasses roughly 80% of the state of North Dakota's population, that's how they pick those counties. So, it's a disproportionate majority of both county commissions and cities, so you get a good breadth of understanding of what's happening, not only here, but obviously all our friends in the West. So, I think Commissioner Shurling, I think with that 15-minute test and the rate, I'm just going to say it, so we've been told the accuracy rate was 95%, and we're doing them side by side now, so you'll have your regular test, which we know work, the 15-minute test as a trial, and right now, we're seeing the accuracy rate at 40%, meaning it doesn't work. I mean, if you're that low, I'm sorry, that means that to me, it doesn't work. So, they're trying to figure out why that may be, whether it's simply a bad test or simply it's not being administered correctly, I don't know. But the saliva test, that is the issue that you're discussing, I think, which is the overall test that we've been using off and on, and as that has been allowed. The reason everyone isn't going to that is because the machines, the technology that they have within the hospitals at Sanford and within our team in Bismarck is the way the test is processed is the problem. So, if you don't have the right chemical makeups, and you're a nurse, you probably know this better than I do, if you don't have the right chemical analysis, you can't process those tests. You can swab 1,000 people with the saliva test, but they don't have the machines to process that test. Does that make sense, Barry, Commissioner Shurling? So, that's why. So, I think our friends in Clay have been allocated more of those because the state has more of that, and I think it's common sense, it's Minneapolis. I mean, if we had a Minneapolis here, I think we'd be having a lot more people that have availability to that. So, we're getting what we can get regarding that, and I see Mr. Wilson motioning at me repeatedly for the last five minutes. Mr. Wilson, go.
Chair Peterson, the only other thing that I was going to add into some of the discussions that we're hearing is not only are the efficacy of some of the different tests that are being used, there are also a number of questions that I think they're still trying to identify answers to at the state level of, some of the different tests have different requirements for the level of expertise that is needed to administer them. And is it a, is a particular test something that must be administered by an RN versus could be administered by, for example, staff in a law enforcement? And that it's not that, in some of the cases where we have questions and challenges, it's not that they're unwilling to give us answers, it's that I believe from what we're being told that they're not entirely sure at a state level of who is the appropriate level, who has the appropriate level of expertise to administer those tests. So, you've got, on one hand, you've got what is the most effective test to use, what tests do we have the appropriate supplies of, and then on top of that, who is most appropriate to administer these tests? So, it's really navigating a path when you have a number of different variables, and we certainly are all ears and trying to ask the right questions when we have the opportunity, but this is, that's a flavor of the discussions that we're having on a day-to-day and week-to-week basis.
Maybe I can sort of summarize out this conversation. I see your hand up, and Commissioner Shurling, but to summarize this conversation, during this commission meeting, as Sheriff Johnner said, I've also received emails from both the state and Cass Public Health, and they're indicating the needs the sheriff's department have will be met. So, if we deviate from that, again, Sheriff Johnner and I talk probably less frequently than Commissioner Shurling and I talk, or Commissioner Shurling and he talk, but the sheriff and I talk pretty frequently, and I think if we have some issues, we can run this back up the chain again and see where it goes, but every indication right now is that our needs will be met. So, Commissioner Shurling.
Well, thank you. I appreciate those answers. You know, just one other aside, I would just really, you mentioned, you mentioned whether or not the information was public. I just really would encourage any of you involved in these discussions to be as transparent as possible with public, because I think, I think everybody just, or at least most people want to make... want to make the right decision. But it's really difficult if you're, you know, everybody's reading everything online and, you know, if you just, it's difficult to make a good decision if you don't have the information in front of you and quality information. And so the more that you can push that out, that good information to the public, I think the better people will be informed and the better their decision-making will be rather than just, you know, going to the internet and listening to, you know, crazy people talk. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, to that point, I think too, that when we talk about things, it comes at a different, it's a different perspective. So if I was to go out and say A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and all of a sudden it's fact, when even I'm not sure, like regarding these tests, I'm not totally sure what the accuracy was. We were hopeful, given what we were told. And then all of a sudden, we put things in the field and we find out, shoot, maybe it's not the magic wand we were all hoping for. And what I always struggle with is to what degree do you get people's hopes up? Is that you hear all sorts of things and you do too. It's sort of what it is sometimes. So with that, Mr. Wilson, anything further?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, only thing is I would ask for consideration of the motion authorized purchase of 10 services and related equipment at a cost of roughly $20,000.
Okay. Commissioners, you have a question before you?
No.
Please. Is there a second, please?
I'll second, and I have a question.
Okay, moved and seconded. The purchase of 10 surfaces be authorized? Estimated about $20,000? Any discussion? Actually, Commissioner Pollock, you said you had a comment.
Yeah. So does this come out of the coronavirus dollars?
Correct.
Commissioner Pollock, yes.
Thank you.
Is Terry, can you still, can you see Terry in there?
No. Catlin's back there, but I do not see.
Didn't know if you wanted to say anything. Any discussion, Commissioners? Any discussion? If not, Mr. Schmaltz, any comments on this? We've authorized, we're attempting to authorize the purchase, Terry Schmaltz just joined us, attempting to authorize the purchase of 10 surfaces. Any comments?
No, I just, Commissioners, I just sent out an email probably about three weeks ago saying, hey, if you need something, Mr. Wilson brought up that, you know, he's looking to push more people out of, out of the county. And so I put a request out there and I got several requests for additional, additional remote workers. So I'm just trying to get ahead of the game.
Thank you, Mr. Schmaltz. Commissioners, any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson, anything further?
Nothing further.
Outstanding. Commissioners, we'll move on to item 6A, flood diversion transfer of sales tax dollars. Mr. Pleasure, is he still on?
Yes, this is your monthly transfer of sales tax dollars. And I think the only thing to say about it really is that sales tax is holding up very well.
Yeah, it is pleasantly shocking. And again, I don't know how much everybody's looked into this, but I'm stunned at the fact we're maintaining and accelerating. So with that, Commissioners, your thoughts? Commissioners, Dean?
Chair, moved to authorize the county finance director to transfer $1,592,366.41 to the city of Fargo as a fiscal agent for the FM diversion authority.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shurling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 2B, state water commission reimbursement request. Mr. Montpleasure, sir.
Again, this is a periodic reimbursement request you get from the city of Fargo where the CAS County and the CAS County Joint Board need to agree to their reimbursement requests. These are for costs incurred for the diversion.
Commissioners, any questions? A motion? Comments? Commissioner Breitling.
Authorized the chair to sign reimbursement request number 108 in the amount of $824,088.63 to the state water commission to distribute funds to the metro flood diversion authority according to the terms and conditions of House Bill 10-12.
Chair, a second, please. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? Discussion, if not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 7, vouchers. Commissioner Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I reviewed the payments on the, the payments registered dated October 30th, 2020 and approved and moved to approve that voucher.
A second, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Pollock?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Breitling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Committee reports. Mr. Wilson, start with you, sir.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I've mentioned this a couple of times previously. We've talked about planning for a state of the county address. Would like to look at doing that the week of November 17th through 20th. Your next commission meeting is on the 16th, Monday, the 16th. Would like to do it some point later in that week. I'm already working with department heads to get kind of an outline of an update per department for the part of the content and working with Mr. Montpleasure for a financial element of that. Third element of that will be remarks by the chair. But what I'm really looking for some feedback on, don't need it right now immediately, but I'd like to have it within the next couple of days, is a date, preferred date, if you have input, so we can get that on the calendar, start planning and advertise that. Would stand by for questions, but that's, that's what I'm looking for. And I'd have one other item if you don't have any questions for me.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Other item I wanted to bring to your attention is if you have not had a chance to open an email from your communications coordinator, Mr. Catlin Solom, today with a look at the revamped palaver ring that Mr. Solom's been working on, I encourage you to do that. He's put a lot of work into it. We have a new format of it that I think is pretty clean, easy to read and is going to attract a lot of attention. And at the same time, continued plea to department heads, this is an opportunity to share information on a monthly basis about the department, your department, the rest of the organization. Please keep the content coming. His initial request was received very well. We got some good information and this is going to be really dependent on the engagement we have from departments to provide, provide input. I encourage you to take a look at it. I think it looks really good.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Commissioner Breitling.
Couple things. Several months ago, we talked about a, one of the entries in an abstract for the real property with CAS County Road Department and their association, talked about first rights of refusal or they were actually, the language was even stronger than that. We, in conjunction with Mr., with Jason and with Murch, we had an attorney who we considered to be the best real estate attorney in the suburban area, review the abstract for us and provide us with information. His response was that including those types of provisions are not illegal, except that they're totally judicially unenforceable. They're called restraints of alienation. I just wanted to let you folks know about that. And secondly, I assume that we all received notes from the chief justice of the North Dakota Supreme Court thanking us for the expenditure of consolidating the two courtrooms. If not, I did, and I assumed he gave it to all of us.
Yes.
Commissioner Breitling, we did and actually spoke to the chief, myself, a brief phone call, and he acknowledged something that I'm, obviously, I think as a commissioner, I'm biased. He acknowledged something that isn't acknowledged often enough, and he said it that way in that we are not as grateful as we should be to the county commission statewide because he's fully cognizant of the fact that some are, that courthouse is our responsibility to maintain and pay for, and they habitate here. And when we do things like this of our own free will, again, this wasn't mandatory. We didn't have to do anything. We just made, I think, the right call as a commission. Clearly, I think, it was the right call as a commission. So he was grateful for that and I've not spoken to him. I knew Van DeWolfe, Christian Breitling, I'm sure you know Van DeWolfe 10 times better than I do, but I always got along with Justice Van DeWolfe. New chief justice seems just as approachable, just as agreeable. So it was, it was a great conversation. It was frankly surprising, and he called me. So that, that stuck me even further. Not that Van DeWolfe wouldn't have. I think Van DeWolfe would have as well, but yeah, it was great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shurling, you're up.
Oh, thank you. I have a full board of the Red River Basin Commission meeting this week. This is one of our quarterly meetings. It's a 42-member board and unfortunately, the border's still closed, so the office in Winnipeg won't be joining us or any, any of our members from Manitoba. And we probably will have to do our conference in January virtually as well because it doesn't look like the border's going to be opened up anytime soon for us. But a number of great projects going on and I will report on that afterwards. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Murch.
No report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Pollock?
I have nothing that needs to be reported. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe not a report, but just a shout out, best of luck to the three Commissioners who are running for reelection. And I get to see more of that next Monday when I have to serve as Chair of the Canvas and Board once again. Thank you.
Lucky, lucky, lucky.
Thank you, Chairman Peterson. That's all I have.
Oh, no, Commissioner Shurling's got a question for you.
I do. I have a question for Mr. Montpleasure. So with all of, and I have to say, just from Commissioner, what Commissioner Steen was saying, kudos to the finance department in putting this whole election together. It's just, you make it look so easy. And I've had a lot of people commenting on what a breeze it was to go in and vote. But I'm wondering with, with all of the early voting and the absentee voting, do you expect to have results like you would normally do? You know, usually by 7:30, 8 o'clock, it's, you have a lot of stuff already calculated.
Well, normally polls close at 8 o'clock. This year, we're closing at 7:00. So yeah, we should get results out fairly quickly. We're in the process right now of opening and counting absentee ballots. We started that on Saturday. We've been going at it all day and we'll probably be going at it for several hours tonight. And what we want to do is get through the first batch of 28,000 that we sent them today. We may not get all the way through that. And then we'll probably have about 3,000 more for them to count tomorrow. So that'll be done fairly early. The other thing that'll really speed things up, speed things up, of course, is we only have six sites. So the, we'll close at 7:00 tomorrow night. We'll have people at all of those six sites to get everything back to the courthouse as quickly as we can. The, the one thing that's going to slow us down on reporting is technology. When these ballots are being scanned, both the absentee ballots and the election day ballots and early voting ballots, there's actual images being taken of each one of those. And so that's what's going to take us the time. I know, for instance, on the absentee ballots, it's going to take us about 20 minutes per machine just to upload from the flash drive into our computers. So that's what's going to take the time. We should be well done by 9:00 with everything.
Mr. Montpleasure, with the, so what I heard you say is you're processing ballots right now, correct?
That's correct.
So it, this is a question I've had for you in the past too. So when the polls close at 7:01, why would you not just immediately at 7:02 dump those results out?
It takes time. It takes, we can't start uploading them to the computer until 7:00.
Okay, okay, that's why. Got it. That's what I didn't understand. That's why I asked the question prior. Got you. Okay, thank you, sir. Anything further, Commissioner Steen?
All I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Montpleasure, you're still up.
Sure, I just want to know, want you to know that one of the things that we've had to do this time is we have, the IT department has really managed all the polling sites. We figured out where we would have them and from there, they took it and went and mapped them out and everything. So they've done a tremendous amount of work and that's why when we talk about moving people off-site and everything, IT simply hasn't had time. And they've been working every, every day on this election for the last two weeks. So it looks easy, but it's really hard in the back room.
As of right now, Mr. Schmaltz just dumped this out, and I think we should all have this in our teams' meetings, right now, as of early voting totals, we have 37,876 people have voted early. How many absentees do we have, roughly 28,000?
About 30. Just a second, I get you the real number. It's a little over 30,000.
So as of right now, we have roughly 70,000 people who voted in CAS County with an election tomorrow. So your number this time has been between 80 and 90, Mr. Montpleasure?
My projection was, yeah, between 80 and 90, and I'm not so sure we're going to get that many. We've got 31,412 absentees so far.
Yeah, so we're right at that 70,000 number as of today, which is crazy. And let me touch on this too. I know we all kind of want to get done with these meetings, finally have a decent third one. But if you note in your team's meeting, you'll see the locations we have. There are a couple of locations. We obviously need one in the rural area of Castleton, but the Civic Center has been very, very low in terms of turnout. The Hilton has been very, very low in terms of turnout. So if at some time we get grief for only having six locations, I think the reasonable response that I'm planning to say, and I'm saying this publicly right now, is clearly there were a couple of occasions that weren't even used. So I know there's frustration with some of the legislators. I don't know if anyone called any other Commissioners. I think they called Mike too regarding, why don't we have one in my precinct or why don't we have one down by my house? The reality is we couldn't populate them, we couldn't keep them safe. And then we follow that with, well, of the six we had, two were hardly even used. So if we needed 10 or 12 or 15 or 20, logistically, it would have been difficult and clearly, based on this population turnout, our study here of people that showed up and voted, we could argue that we needed two less. So it's an amazing thing that we've gone through, Mr. Montpleasure. Obviously, kudos to you and your team because we don't understand what you've been going through for the last couple of months, trying to figure out how to do this, train people in and hope things go up without a hitch, especially given the dynamics in, in the media right now, not necessarily locally here, but certainly nationally regarding, you know, the voter fraud and all the things that are all, that other people are worried about. We just have a very different means and methods here in North Dakota than other states. So, so Mike, thank you. Make sure your team understands how grateful the commission is and we realize and acknowledge that this hasn't been the easiest election. And I know we're not done yet either, and I'm glad Commissioner Steen has to be there next week, not me. And I think the four of us that know that it's not us should also be tickled, think that it's not us, nothing personal, Rick. But yeah, so I'll quit babbling there. Mr. Montpleasure, anything else?
Just that, you know, along with everybody, we're real concerned about COVID. We have a lot of temps working in our office and periodically, some of those go home sick. And so far, we only had one who tested positive with COVID, but she wasn't near anybody. You know, she had a mask, all of that sort of stuff. But we're, we're real concerned at some point along here, that's going to catch up with us. Law of averages.
Yep, but we just need to get through tomorrow. With that, thank you, Mr. Montpleasure. Get through Monday. Come on, buddy. We're good for tomorrow. So with that, we do have all sorts of meetings next week. I have an insurance reserve board meeting, our finance committee's meeting, actually a couple of days, it looks like. But otherwise, it's just same meetings that most of us are going to in my COVID task force, which we talked about before. Those meetings have not been getting any shorter or less frequent. Oh, well, and I will stop there. With that, correspondence.
Correspondence received as of November 2nd, 2020, letter from the North Dakota Department of Transportation requesting comments on environmental concerns with proposed roadway improvement to install high tension cable guard rail down the center median and I-94 from Valley City to West Fargo. Copy forwarded to county engineer.
Moved to receive and file. Second please, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion passes, item 10.
Moved to adjourn.
Is there a second please? Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned as always. Thank you, team members, thank you.